Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, December the 7th, 2021. It's shortly after the 10:00 a.m. hour. We're here at the Assembly Hall, 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. Commissioners, we've got one more board meeting before this year comes to a close. But for right now, we're calling this meeting to order. We'll start with any special recognitions or presentations at this time?
So we have none this morning.
All right. Commissioners, I think we'll move right into Agenda Review. We have a very robust schedule today. We're going to try to keep it moving as much as possible.
Yes, we do. And so with the start of the December 14th Agenda Review, the first thing we'll have next week is the 2021 Employee Service Awards. And then we move on to Unfinished Business, which is Item 588. And this is the second reading of the 2022 Budget. There is one amendment that has been provided to you as of yesterday, which would include the Second State Court Judge. That's the only amendment that we have proposed this far.
All right. Very good.
All right. And we will move on to the regular agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So Item 599 is with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the Superior Court and Accountability Court. This is for the local law enforcement grant in the amount of $15,000. The term is January 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2022.
Okay.
Item 600 is with Thermo Fisher Scientific for the Superior Court Accountability Court. It's Change Order Number 1 to Contract 2017-198. This is to revise the contract term, reagent pricing, and replace 1 Indico Plus with 1 Midray BS-480. It's 48 cents per test cost. This is one year with option to renew six additional one-year periods.
This is the lab testing, right? The Accountability Lab Court Testing?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, it's the Accountability Court Lab Testing.
That's right. Yeah, it's a mouthful, but yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right. Next item.
Okay. Item 601 is with the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities through the Division of Behavioral Health. This is to rescind Contract 2021-157, and it's to replace it with the next item, which is Item 602, through the same department. This is a grant that was received, and we are going to receive $150,000 at a time.
Right. So we have to rescind that $300,000 contract because we're only getting $150 now and $150,000 a year.
Correct.
Right.
It's still the $300,000.
Together.
Together, right.
All right. Next item.
Item 603 is with Community Oriented Policing Services through the COPS Office, Community Policing Development, the CPD Program, through the Sheriff's Office. This is for Youth Engagement Program Grant in the amount of $125,000. The term is September 1st, 2021, through August 31st, 2022.
This is, Commissioners, the Youth Engagement Grant is a very good grant that will be carried out through the Sheriff's Office as we talk about community policing and engaging our young people here in Rockdale County. So to give the sheriff these extra added funds to help him increase youth engagement is a big, big plus on behalf of Rockdale County.
Is this a new grant? We've not had this grant before?
I'm not sure. This would maybe be new under this name. The COPS Grant, the Community Policing Grant is not new to the Sheriff's Office, but I think having this particular tagline to it is perhaps new. But it's a part of the ongoing program that the sheriff has in place to do more youth and civic engagement with our young people, and that's a big plus, particularly during these difficult times right now. Just wanted to point that out. Next item, please.
Item 604 is with the U.S. Department of Justice through the COPS, and this is the Sheriff's Office. This is for Employee Mentoring Health and Wellness Program Grant, the amount of $116,480. The term is September 1st, 2021, through August 31st, 2023.
I got just a moment to talk about that one as well. You know, a couple of years ago, we implemented the Fit to Fight Fire Program, Health and Wellness through our fire department, through the leadership over at the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue. This program is specifically designed for our sheriff's deputies. It is just as important that the sheriff's deputies are fit to fight crime in our community and that they are agile and fit and they can run and do all those things that we need a policeman to do in this heat of the moment. So this program is going to assist them with making sure that, from a health and wellness standpoint, that we're doing what we can to reduce heart attacks, strokes, high blood pressure, and all of those things that a sheriff's deputy, or should I say, public safety personnel come in contact during the course of his or her duty. Having this type of program really encourages health and wellness among our law enforcement communities. This is another one I'm glad to see. We've had the Fit to Fight Fire with the Fire Department for quite some time. This one will help make sure that our law enforcement are fit, in shape, and they can run from here to the start side.
Well, and also is mental health and wellness.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, we know that 25% of the population at any given time has a mental health issue, but when you've got a stressful job, like they do in law enforcement, it can be hard.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, that's another piece of it.
Well, all of those, what you're talking about, the mental part or the physical part, it's certainly important.
And they work together.
It works absolutely. They both go hand in hand as they are responding to the needs of citizens and taking care of each other as well.
Absolutely.
Next item, please.
Item 605 is with Magnet Forensics. This is through the Technology Services Department. This is for the Axiom License and Training in the amount of $17,165, and it's for 12 months. Item 606 is with Salya Digital Media LLC for Technology Services Department. This is for the professional website development for water resources in the amount of $6,770 per year, and it auto-renews each year. Item 607 is with Monsito Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is for Web Governance Suite in the amount of $6,909, and it's for one year.
Next item, please.
Item 608 is with Navigate 360 through the Technology Services Department. This is for Alert Lockdown and Form Counter Evacuate, known as ALIS, Instructor Certification for Active Shooter, in the amount of $1,251, is for three years, then auto-renews for one year terms. Item 609 is for iWork Systems Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is for fleet management software for tracking on various devices in the amount of $4,000 for one year. Item 610 is with Openhand Atlanta Incorporated. This is for general services through the Senior Services Division. It's a letter of agreement to work collaboratively onto the Georgians Receiving and Insightful Telenutrition Seminar, known as GRITZ Project. It's at no cost through November 30th, 2022, then auto-renews annually. Item 611 is with the Atlanta Community Food Bank for General Services in the Senior Services Division. It's a memorandum of understanding to receive and distribute commodity foods to seniors aged 60 and above at no cost. The term is January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022.
I'll stand.
Right. Item 612 is with Sweet Magnolias, Season 2 Productions Incorporated through General Services. This is for the release of the location for use of Costly Mill Park for filming Sweet Magnolias. Item 613 is with Comcast Business through General Services Department. This is for Fiber for Johnson Park Recreation Teen Room in the amount of $568.30 per month, and it's ongoing. Item 64... Oh, I'm sorry.
Could we come back to 612 for just a minute?
Sure.
Is there a revenue source there?
Director Sanders.
Good morning. So yes, there is. The film agreement was approved at an earlier meeting. So there's the revenue for the filming. This is just the release that says they left our property in good condition.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Item 614 is with Janet Davis through the General Services Department through the Recreation Division. It's an instructor for adult swim classes at Johnson Park Recreation Center. The estimated revenue is $4,500 with a 70/30 split. The term is January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, with option to renew two additional two 12-month periods. Item... I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Item 615 is with Patricia Blake through the General Services Department Recreation Division is for an instructor for youth swim classes at Johnson Park Recreation Center. The estimated revenue is $12,400 with 70/30 split. The term is January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 616 is with Jonathan Bennett through the General Services Department, the Recreation Division. This is for an instructor for the tennis coaching for youth and adults at Johnson Park Recreation Center and the Rockdale Tennis Center. The estimated revenue is $5,400 with 70/30 split. The term is January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, with the option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 617 is with Pinnacle Maintenance LLC. This is through the General Services Parks and Recreation Division. This is for the landscape and grounds maintenance for the Courthouse, Portman Drive, JP Car Complex, and Water Resources Customer Service Center in the amount of $1,820.83 per month for four sites. It's one year with option to renew three additional one-year periods. Item 618 is with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency through the Fire and Rescue Department. This is for the Employee Employer Memorandum of Understanding for Michael E. Lee Jr. to participate in the incident management team at no cost in the amount of January... The term is January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022. Item 619 is with Busy Bee Exterminators for the Fire and Rescue Department. This is for the Termite Treatment for Fire Training Annex, the Change Order Number 1 to Contract 2014-52. It's an increase in the annual fee from $190 to $200. The renewed term is until April 21st, 2023. Item 620 is with Raftellis Financial Consultants Incorporated. This is through the Stormwater Management Department. This is for data development to support stormwater's rate structure in the amount of $29,340, and it's for three months. Item 621 is with the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District. This is through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Single Family Toilet Rebate Program, not to exceed $10,000 for one year. Item 622 is also with Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Multi-Family Toilet Rebate Program, not to exceed $16,500 for one year. Item 623 is with All South Constructors Incorporated. This is through the Water Resources Department for the G's Mill Hydrochloride Generation and Brine Storage Modifications in the amount of $982,956.70, and it's 300 days from the notice to proceed. Item 624 is with Walter Nunnely through the Juvenile Court. This is for Peer Support Specialists. It's Change Order Number 3 to Contract 2019-81 to add peer support services for Juvenile Court. It's an additional $11,250, and it's grant-funded. Item 620...
Do we have anybody from Juvenile Court here? I'm just... Walter and then the next one, Paula Boyd, have been with State Court. And so I'm curious about the move to the Family Treatment Court that's associated with Juvenile Court.
We'll get an answer for you.
Okay. Item 625 is with Paula Boyd through the Juvenile Court. It's also for Peer Support Specialists. It's Change Order Number 2 to Contract 2019-167 to add peer support services for Juvenile Court. It's an additional $11,250, and it's grant-funded. Item 626 is with Tyler Technologies Incorporated through the Clerk of Court's Office. This is for the Odyssey SAAS. It's Change Order Number 6 to Contract 2019-149 to add additional various SAAS services and hardware items for the Sheriff's Office. It's an additional $7,584. Item 627 is with Eleven Fingers Design for the Probate Court. This is for website design and development creation in the amount of $2,450. Item 628 is for the SPLASH Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Agreements. This is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Conyers relating to the continuation of a 1% sales and use tax within Rockdale County and the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Conyers and all associated SPLASH documents. Item 629 is a request... is a list of requests for alcoholic beverage license renewals. Item 630 is a volunteer appointment for the Department of Family and Children's Services Board. This is a request to appoint Phyllis Hatcher to fill the unexpired term of Pastor John Item 631 is Future Land Use Case 2022-01, in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended so as to redesign a property located at 1362, 1390, and 0 Rockbridge Road Northwest from the low-density residential future land use category to the light industrial future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be on your agenda next Tuesday for a first reading. Item 632 is Res zoning Case 2022-01, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 1362, 1390, and 0 Rockbridge Northwest from R1 to R3 and M1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will also be on next Tuesday for a first read. Item 633 is rezoning Case 2022-02, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2721 Turner Road Southwest from R1 and CRS to a portion of... and a portion of 2905 Turner Road Southwest from R1-Commercial to CRS to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 634 is requisition through the General Services Department for Floor Creations LLC to remove and install new carpet, cove base, and move furniture from DFAX for Contract 2018-99 in the amount of $21,495. Item 634... Item 635 is requisition through the General Services Department through the Miracle Recreation Equipment Company. This is for Milstead Park for the new playground, shade, structures, and benches in the amount of $51,260.57, and this is SPLASH-funded. Item 636 is a requisition through Technology Services Department. This is for Conference Technologies Incorporated. This is for the SNS Evo Shared Storage and Video Editing Server for Digital Media for Public Relations in the amount of $51,486.10, and this is ARPA-funded. Item 637 is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for Dice's Solutions Incorporated. This is for the Public Relations Storage for the Data Center in the amount of $63,719.34, and this is ARPA-funded. ARPA-funded is half of it. ARPA funding is $30,513.90.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item 638 is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for Southern Computer Warehouse. This is for Dell laptops and docking stations for the computer refresh of outdated workstations in the amount of $199,096.75, and this is host-funded. Item 639 is a requisition through Technology Services Department for Dice's Solutions Incorporated. This is for the Meraki Verifocal MV72 Outdoor HD Cameras with License and Support and Meraki Verifocal MV22 Indoor HD Cameras with License and Support in the amount of $61,733. This is ARPA-funded, and it's for fleet and senior services. Item 640 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Brief Cam. This is an investigative tool to reduce time spent watching the surveillance videos in the amount of $39,000. Item 641 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Axon Enterprises Incorporated. This is for the fleet in-car cameras in the amount of $24,651, and it's SPLASH-funded. Item 642 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office. This is for Ed's Public Safety Incorporated for ammunition in the amount of $17,739.40. Item 643 is a requisition through the EMA Department. This is for Motorola Solutions Incorporated. This is for CAD Maintenance and Service for August 2021 through July 2022 in the amount Item 644 is a requisition through the Fire and Rescue and E911 Division. This is for Vector Solutions for Fire Training Tracking Software per renewal of Contract 2018-122 in the amount of $15,798.39. Item 645 is requisition through the Water Resources Department for IPR Southeast LLC. This is for the Almond Branch Sewer Main Upsizing as task order per the Contract 2019-09 in the amount of $1,579,038.
$38.
$38, thank you. Item 647 is a requisition through the Rockdale Water Resources Department. This is for Boyle's Environmental LLC. This is for the light cleaning of pipe and CCTV inspection for DeKalb Basins. This is four phases in the amount of $59,290. Item 647 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Delta Municipal Supply. This is for the Neptune T10 Water Meter and Neptune MIU Activation for AMI Project through December 2021 in the amount of $885,000, and this is SPLASH-funded. Item 648 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Envelopes and Forms Incorporated. This is for the postage and printing for the water bills and inserts for 2022 per the Contract 2013-27 in the amount of $355,000. Item 649 is a requisition through Stormwater Management for Yancey Rentals for the aluminum trench boxes and spreaders. It's for two units in the amount of $21,500. Item 650 is an expenditure request through Peach State Assistance and through the Tax Commissioner's Office. This is for the delinquent notices for fees for October 2021 in the amount of $41,732.33.
Do we know what the delinquent fees total is?
I'm not sure of the totals.
Look through the contract.
But I do want to believe that a good bit of this is associated with our stormwater delinquency, with folks who have outstanding stormwater fees. This is now, as you remember, being picked up by the Tax Commission's Office. We've actually, before the stormwater fee was taken over to the Tax Commission Office, we already had a relationship with this particular company to go after those folks who had delinquent and outstanding fees. So now that it's over there, it's just a continuation, really. I don't know that number, Chief.
No, sir, but we will get that and have it for your next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 651 is an expenditure request... not two expenditure requests, just one, through ACCG and Irma Claims Administrative Services through the Finance Department is defense cost invoices in the amount of $27,923.40. Item 652 is an expenditure request for TNT Uniforms South. This is for Fire and Rescue Department. This is for uniforms and nameplates in the amount of $20,775.90. Item 653 is an expenditure request for DeKalb County Revenue and License Administration through the Rockdale Water Resources Department for Sewage Treatment for September 2021 in the amount of $61,944.75. Item 654 is a list of departments who are requesting to surplus equipment. It's the General Services Department, the Sheriff's Office, EMA, Fire and Rescue, and Water Resources. Item 655 is an Association County Commissioners of Georgia, the Defined Benefit Plan for Rockdale County Employees. It's an Adoption Agreement Amendment Number 2. And Item 656 goes along with Item 655. It's the Resolution for Defined Benefits Plan through the Association County Commissioners of Georgia for the Defined Benefit Plan for Rockdale County Employees. It's Adoption Agreement Amendment Number 2. Item 657 is the telework policy. It's a new policy for Rockdale County employees through the Department of Talent Management. Item...
So could we get an overview of that, please?
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Yes. We are excited about this new telework policy. It is a new policy. As you know, we went through working remote, and then we were able to come back. So as a result of that, we do have a policy in place now where department heads can request for certain positions to be allowed to telework. There's a selection process. The department heads will then approve a schedule for the employees to be able to telework as well. So we are excited about this increasing tons of statistics and data that speak to the benefits of having a telework option for our Rockdale County employees. So excited about it. Thank you.
So the policy is in place, but there will be no implementation until...
Yeah, so let's talk about that. So the policy requires an application process. So what that means is then the directors would have to work with Talent Management, and will also be working with the Board of Commissioners, the Chairman's Office, on looking at those positions that are eligible. From there, we'll actually have to look at an actual official workplace for them, if their offices are set up for them, and then also being able to come up with an actual schedule for them as well. So there's a three-part phased-in process for this program.
And when do we anticipate that they'll be able to implement this?
We're going to start rolling out... So the policy will be effective January 1, and then definitely by the end of Q1, they should actually be fully functioning in their telework policy programs for those positions that are authorized for it.
So if they're working remotely, then what kind of equipment does the county provide for them?
Well, we do have that actually in the policy. So if it's a position where they require a laptop, they're going to have to have internet access within their home. They'll have to have access to a telephone as well. So those things will have to be in place for them to be able to work remote.
Does that offer flexibility for the employee, the hours and things like that?
It does, Commissioner. We did actually add that where the department head can schedule if someone is working remote, either a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if it's a Tuesday, Thursday, or if they're going to be working remote completely, all of those options are included in the policy.
Does that include time also, the time of day that they work?
It does. So the schedule would have to be approved ahead of time. So the county hours, but departmental schedules are going to be different. So that's why it's not included specifically for the county, but the individual department can have hours where... I know some of the departments work from 7:00 to 4:00, some people work from 11:00 to 7:00, some people work overnight. So it will have to depend on the individual departments for the actual hours for the remote work.
Would the department heads be able to accommodate if somebody needs to be flexible for one week on their hours as opposed to...
Yes, ma'am. It does allow for that as well. It does allow for... It allows for flexibility in the scheduling. So it doesn't necessarily have to be Monday through Friday. Also, if someone were to come in and say, you know, "This week, I'm going to work remote on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday," it does allow for that as well. So it doesn't have to be a set schedule, but it is going to be at the discretion of the department head based on business needs. So that will allow for that.
So could someone work remotely all the time, five days a week?
They can. It does allow for that as well. So someone could actually be completely remote, no office here in Rockdale County, still having to come in for meetings and things of that nature. So it does speak to them, having to report to work if needed, the timeline that they have to report to work, and they are completely a remote telework position. So it allows for both. Either you're completely remote, or you have flexibility in having that option to work remote.
I just think this is a wonderful step.
Me too.
You know, we know that we've lost a couple of good people because they took other positions where they could work remotely.
Yes.
And it just... It's, you know, it's what businesses are moving to.
Right. The climate is right now where people are definitely working.
And we learned during the pandemic that we're... And we learned during the pandemic that work did not stop because people were working remotely.
And not only this, this should also speak to our need for space in the future as we're talking about looking at the courthouse, the needs that we have for the courthouse and our own admin positions. We might be able to reduce the amount of needed space. So I'm very excited about this. This is one of those twenty-first century things that we're moving into. So this, this is exciting.
And Commissioners, the excitement continues. And I do want to remind you that one of the things that we have thought long and hard about this whole telework policy is that each director and every individual department will have to go through a critique sheet, a series of evaluation determining what employees are eligible. Don't want to send a false message out that everybody gets to raise their hand and say, ooh, 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 I want to work from home. First and foremost, the needs of the citizens of Rockdale County will always be at the forefront. Based upon the dynamics of every department will determine who gets to work when and how often. Basic county government political operations, as a county government entity that we are, our basic operating hours are still eight AM to five PM. Public safety works twenty-four hours a day. And then there's a couple of other entities, Rockdale Water Resources, that work twenty-four hours a day. However, we've been able to, through Talent Management, identify that there may be a few positions that are eligible. But this will come from the direction of each individual department director based upon the needs in the department and the needs of the citizens of Rockdale County. I just want to make sure the clarity is there so that folks know that this is certainly a step in the right direction. This is the way of the workforce and the world is moving in, and you're absolutely correct. The pandemic and the height of the pandemic certainly taught us that because we had to work from home. A good number of folks had to work from home. Everybody doesn't get to work from home because you certainly can't cut the grass at Johnson Park from home. Just thought I'd just clear that up.
Well, I, you know, we have great directors. We have absolutely an amazing staff, and I'm sure that they get the spirit of what we're trying to do. And I'm sure that they understand that the people come first with this board and so that they would govern their selections accordingly. But I do believe that this is what's needed for the workforce, and I commend Talent Management for, because we've been talking about this for a long time, even before the pandemic, we were talking about this. So thank you, Talent Management.
Thank you.
All right, well, Executive Director Holmes, you might just want to stay put for a moment. The next one is the item six fifty-eight Workplace Violence Awareness Policy.
Yes, and just to talk a little bit about that, we do have our standards of professional conduct, which does speak in terms of behavior. Workplace violence, though, defines in more detail what's considered workplace violence, specifically addressing aggressive behavior, property damage, threats, and things of that nature. So this not only speaks to defining, it speaks to investigation. It also speaks to the county's stand on zero tolerance for workplace violence. So we are excited about being able to bring this as well.
All right, and item six fifty-nine is the Retirement Plan Policy Amendment.
Yes, ma'am. The Retirement Plan Policy Amendment, really coinciding with item six fifty-five and six fifty-six, this is the portion where we have updated the actual retirement policy. The highlights for that is the multiplier going from one point seven five to two percent. It also allows for our employees to contribute an additional one percent towards their retirement. There are several different updates in there as far as PTO being allowed to go into a deferred compensation plan. So we've been working on the retirement policy updates for years. We actually worked with a consultant last year, so we're excited to be able to bring this as well. So it is an updated retirement policy for effective January one, twenty twenty-two.
And although Executive Director Holmes didn't say it, but we're certainly super excited about this upgrade. This is a big benefit for the employees in Rockdale County. I think there's been just a tad bit of confusion because a lot of folks, watch this, who don't work in Talent Management and who can't speak on benefits are speaking about things they don't know anything about. If you are a Rockdale County employee, we encourage you to go to where? Talent Management, to the experts who know about it, so you don't get it secondhand, you don't get it in the break room, you don't get it in the parking lot, and you don't be talking to folks who don't know what they know. I can't speak on the benefits that are given in the upgrade from Talent Management because I'm not a part of the benefits team in there, so I don't have the, I only have the surface knowledge. I'm going to redirect every employee that texts and calls me about the benefits. I'm going to send them where? To the experts. Where are they located? At Talent Management. A lot of good news, as Commissioner Washington alluded to a moment ago, this board since twenty seventeen has really put a tremendous amount of emphasis on employees and morale in this organization and looking for those products, goods, and services that will benefit not just paid salary and compensation, but several other things that really make a house a home. So we've been really putting a lot of emphasis on that. Oftentimes, just like with citizens getting misinformation, if they don't go to the source, if they don't go to the origin and the source of the information, they will get miscommunicated information from people at the grocery store, the park, and in the community. If you really want to know what's going on, go to the source and go to those who master the information. Where is that related to our employees? The Department of Talent Management.
How are we rolling this out to the employees? How are we telling them so that they can stop getting the information at the water cooler?
We actually have had multiple meetings with the employees. We actually brought in ACCG. We did a Zoom call as well where we invited all Rockdale County employees. ACCG has actually scheduled one-on-one meetings for employees as well. We met with leadership teams prior to us even communicating to the employees. So we met with the Sheriff's Office, we met with Public Safety. We talked to the directors and department heads as well, making sure that everybody was aware of this information. So we've definitely conducted a lot of meetings, and we're continuing to do that. So as the Chairman just mentioned, we welcome the one-on-ones. If people have additional questions, definitely, I'm willing to sit down, my entire team. And again, ACCG has been great in terms of translating and helping people calculate what it means for that multiplier change as well.
One of the things, Commissioner Washington, that we realize, particularly with our public safety personnel, because of the hours that they work, oftentimes, public safety don't have the opportunities readily available to get over to Talent Management. Or when the information is released and disseminated, they may be homesleeped or they may be out in a police car or fire truck. We encourage those individuals to set some time that works with your schedule, your day off, some time where you can, or if you have to negotiate something with your supervisor, where you can make your way over to Talent Management and again, get it from the source. Because everybody doesn't always get the information at the same time due to scheduling. However, Talent Management is wide open. You can go over there, even the director herself, that she will sit down and give you the right information about your benefits.
But wasn't this done, didn't we have a study group or a group of?
Part of it, part of it included, we actually had a consultant that worked with us as well as we did a focus group. And the focus group represented a variety of employees through Rockdale County. It did include public safety. It also included someone from the Sheriff's Office, from Fire. And so one of the things that we talked about is what are some things they would like to see with our retirement plan? And again, we've been talking about this for years. So this is one step, in my opinion. This is something that we're going to continue to look at, but this is one phase that we definitely wanted to be able to do. The multiplier was a hot topic, so we have moved the needle there. One of the other hot topics was the point system and how we calculate retiree medical. So we actually looked at other counties as well, surrounding counties, larger counties, Henry County, Gwinnett County, DeKalb County, Newton County. We looked at all those counties around and we talked, looked at what are they doing with retiree medical? So it wasn't based on any point system. So our plan is to definitely be able to offer our employees retiree medical and be able to offer them the exact same thing that we're offering our active employees right now with Rockdale County. It is consistent with what the other counties surrounding us are doing as well.
Commissioners, I'm so proud that this BOC, this administration has taken a very positive step forward on behalf of our employees. No other administration prior to us has been able to do what I'm calling a deep dive like this on behalf of the employees. So this is definitely a step in the right direction. There's more work to be done. There is definitely more work to be done, but guess what? This BOC right here, we're doing it.
Right, and item six sixty is the On Call Policy Amendment.
Yes, so this is another thing that we've been able to change with this administration. We first introduced where we actually allocate or take into consideration that if someone is on call for us, that we actually pay them one hour for being dedicated and available to us, even after work hours. This policy actually allows for them to continue to get the one hour during the weekday. It now updates so that if they are on call on Saturday and Sunday, they will now go to two hours. So if they're on call, that means that they cannot go out, they cannot do anything as far as family and planning. They need to be available to respond to us. So this definitely continues with the one hour, which we already had in place, and now it updates so if on the weekend, they will receive two hours of pay for being on call.
Well, this is another upgrade when you talk about having on-call personnel. Particularly, this places emphasis on the weekend. That's the time of the week when most people are relaxing. Well, if an individual is designated to be on call by his or her supervisor, then that person cannot partake in certain activities as a person who's not on call. But we compensate them for that, and we recognize that we're taking away from their quality family time and leisure time, but they're certainly being compensated. So there's an upgrade in that area as well.
So that compensation is in addition to if they do get called out, they get paid for that?
That is correct. They're getting, it's a totally, this is whether they get called or not. If you are classified as on call, this is what you are compensated.
All right, and then item six sixty-one is a repeal of policy for the Employee Participation and Training Courses of the Rockdale County Enrichment Program. It was called RE policy, and we're looking to repeal this.
That is correct, Chairman and Madam Commissioners. Annually, not annually, but continuously, we're looking at Rockdale County policies and procedures. This particular policy is listed on our website. It is inactive, it is out of date, so we do not have a RE program. There's no RE training center. So we would like to repeal this, and then for twenty twenty-two, we'll be introducing the new updated training program. We do currently use Local Gov U, not the program that they have here. They speak to the P drive. We've changed all of those things. So the recommendation is that we repeal this policy.
Absolutely.
And Commissioners, I must share with you that Talent Management has done a fantastic job in the area of career development and training as it relates to quality customer service. We've been preaching that over the last five years in every department, how we communicate with people, how we talk to people by way of the telephone, email, and any correspondence that we have representing the brand, the institution, and the standard of Rockdale County. Quality customer service is critically important in this community. The beauty of us being the second smallest county in the state of Georgia is the fact that we can come into the Water Department and we can talk to people in tangible and touchable locations here in county government to get things done. Well, we have to have people that know how to talk to them. Quality customer service is critically important. Talent Management has done a fantastic job with making sure that the training in that area is consistent, and we're preparing to carry that over on into twenty twenty-two as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Director Holmes.
Thank you. And item six sixty-two, it is an emergency resolution to accept the material terms of the Distributor and Jansen Settlements pursuant to the Georgia Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one National Opioid Settlement Agreements and associated documents. This is submitted for ratification. Item six sixty-three is the Appointment of Rockdale County Transportation Department Director Brian Kelly, and this is also submitted for ratification, and Executive Director Holmes would like to say some things. So, all right.
She's the star of the show.
Yes, yes.
There's a lot of good things. Just wanted to share a little bit about Brian Kelly. He is coming to us with ten years plus project management and construction experience. He has transportation systems, bridge, heavy civil rail transit, construction engineering, and inspection experience. He also is coming to us with five years plus experience in commercial structures and aviation. He is a professional engineer in Tennessee, Georgia, and Alabama. He also comes to us with a Bachelor of Science in Architectural Engineering from Tennessee State University, as well as certification from Sacramento State University. So we are excited to be able to appoint or make the recommendation to appoint Mr. Brian Kelly.
Absolutely.
Yes, we are, and I want to just yield, Commissioners, just for a quick second, to Chief Cave, who has been serving as our interim director. He's been Chief of Staff slash interim director of Rockdale Department of Transportation. Chief Cave has put together a portfolio for the new director to help the new director transition. You want to tell us a little bit about that, Chief Cave?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. I have learned over the last few months that there is a lot involved in reference to the Department of Transportation. And when Mr. Kelly starts next Monday, obviously, he'll go through new employee orientation on Monday, but Tuesday, we're getting right to work. Tuesday, he and I will be joined at the hip for the rest of the week next week, and I have a series of meetings set up with all of our consultants that provide engineering services. Also, the slew of projects that we have going on in Rockdale County, approximately twenty-five different projects that are either in progress, about to be started, or planned for the future. So there's a lot involved, not only with meeting all of the key personnel that are involved in those projects, but also the operations of the county and the orientation to the county government, but also the geographic location here in our community. All of that is slated to be a part of our process. So very excited. He's a, he interviewed very well in the process, and I really do think that his talents are going to be a benefit to this county.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So we'll get to meet him next Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
I was just going to add, Commissioners, both of you all are well aware that the good residents, the good folks over in the Lake Capri community, as well as the McCartney Landing Communities, are waiting and watching, ready for Director Kelly. The bridge has been out for quite some time on Rock Bridge Road, and during the transition from one director to the next, we've been waiting to get that project back underway again. There's been some upgrades and improvement over in the McCartney Landing subdivision that the chief and I and several members of our staff have been in communication on an ongoing basis with the folks over at the McCartney Landing Home Owners Association. So it's not limited, of course, to those two areas and subdivisions. All of Rockdale County is in need of this transportation director. I pointed those out, particularly because the bridge being out on Rock Bridge Road has been a significant barrier on the community and on public safety. And all of the developmental issues that they encountered over at McCartney Landing has also been a big headache for them as well. So.
Plus we have the unpaved road on Flatshells Road that we keep getting emails and phone calls and text messages about on a daily basis. I don't know if you all are getting them, but I am getting them.
Yes.
But, and that's something that I really want to address very soon in his ten, when he gets here.
Yes, ma'am, that's actually a part of the plan also, is not only telling him about some of the items that are pending, but personally introducing him to the citizens that have vested interest and concerns so that they can have a one-on-one introduction with the new director so that they'll know that somebody is focusing on their attention. Also, Mr. Chairman, you bring up the bridge project in Lake Capri. I would like to say that all of the documents have been provided to our Procurement Division to start the process of the bid process. So the ball is consistently rolling, even though, you know, everyone may not see physically any kind of work taking place. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to make sure that this is done correctly.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Washington, for bringing up the concerns of the folks out on the south side on Klondike Road area, right there at the Rockdale DeKalb County line. There's a lot of new construction and residential development right there at the county line, and those folks are really concerned about that road that's been dirt and paved for many, many years. It needs to be paved now to deal with all of the additional residential traffic that's going to be coming through. Absolutely. All right, next item, please.
Item six sixty-four is a resolution through the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia for the upcoming twenty twenty-two Georgia legislative session. This is a resolution supporting a warrant to Georgia's education dispute resolution law. Item six sixty-five is an intergovernmental agreement by and between the County of Newton, Georgia and the County of Rockdale, Georgia for provision of public service services. This is for parcel land located at twenty-nine thirty-two Rockwood Drive. Item six sixty-six is with, is an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Newton County Water and Sewer Authority and the County of Rockdale, Georgia for service area agreement for the underwood crossing subdivision. Item six sixty-seven is transmittal resolution. Item six sixty-seven is transmittal resolution to the Land Regional Commission. This is our application for federal funding of local projects through the RDOT Department. Item six sixty-eight is with Concast Business through Technology Services Department. This is for the fire department, the county's data center, an amount of $2,000 for one-time installation at $36,845.20 per month for sixty months.
Sorry, I think my microphone was off. I hope you can all hear me. Item six sixty-nine is with Kendra Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is the network assessment, data center assessment, and manage incidents response assessment and support services in the amount of $154,300, and it's for five years. Item six seventy is with Tyler Technologies Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is for Eagle Software Clerk Suite, and this is change order number one, a contract 2018-97. This is to add software for probate court office and for the gun permits. It's an additional $71,133, and it's ARPA-funded. Item six seventy-one is with Salia Digital Media LLC through the Technology Services Department. This is for the professional website development for the county in the amount of $14,049 per year, and it auto-renews each year, and it's ARPA-funded. Item six seventy-two is a requisition through the Technology Services Department. This is for Dysis Solutions Incorporated for NOC services for switches, security, VoIP wireless, and the umbrella in the amount of $192,720. Item six seventy-three is a requisition for Technology Services, No Before Incorporated. This is a training subscription in the amount of $21,600. Item six seventy-four is a requisition through the Technology Services Department. This is for Coggs Dell Corporation for service renewals in the amount of $96,414.10. Item six seventy-five is a requisition through the General Services Department for American Facility Services for janitorial services for various buildings in the amount of $343,800. Item six seventy-six is a requisition through the General Services Department for American Facility Services, and this is janitorial service for the Rockdale Water Resources Buildings in the amount of $55,800. Item six seventy-seven is a requisition through the General Services Department for A Action Incorporated for janitorial service for various buildings in the amount of $108,525, 525, oh, sorry, I'm going to start again. Item six seventy-eight is a requisition through the General Services Department for Pratt Recycling Incorporated. This is for trash service for carts and dumpsters in the amount of $113,052. Item six seventy-nine is a requisition with the General Services Department for Pratt Recycling for solid waste services in the amount of $270,804. Item six eighty is a requisition through the General Services Department for Busy Bee Exterminators. This is for pest control for various buildings in the amount of $26,484. Item six eighty-one is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance. This is for preventative maintenance on the HVAC systems for various buildings in the amount of $149,284. Item six eighty-two are the updates and amendments to the Rockdale County Employee Classification and Pay Plan. This is the 2021 year-end review for talent management. Item six eighty-three is with Rockdale Plaza LLC. This is the letter of understanding as provided for Rockdale County Contract 2021-126. It's the lease for the West Avenue.
Executive Director Sanders, are you prepared today to give us any kind of preliminary update about the elections' location on the West Avenue?
Yes, good morning. So elections is fully moved in, and they sent out a press release last week. All of the phone numbers and the contact information is the same, so it should be a seamless transition. The address over there is 1115 West Avenue and also 1121 to 1133. So they are, they haven't, I haven't seen their mailing address specifically, but there'll be more coming out. So after they get fully moved in, Director Gumm is going to hook up with them and do a full PR campaign well in advance of any early elections. We're working on the signage. It's renovated. We have a lot more space there. So we went from 13,300 to 29,900, and it's less per square foot. So for the elections office, once you go, and they're open, so you can all feel free to go in. There's rooms, large rooms, so the citizens don't have to wait outside. So it's really going to be a great setup for elections for sure. And also Extension Services, they're going to have a, they have a demonstration kitchen right in their area. It's nice. I took a tour. So I think you're going to be really impressed when you see that. Extension Services is in the middle of moving, so they wouldn't be a great place to visit right now. But elections definitely is in there, and they've already released their press release. And I did see this morning Extension Services released there, "We're moving" on social media.
Commissioners, this is a big deal for Rockdale County Board of Elections and elections here in our community. That's a tremendous amount of increased space. No voter will have to stand out in inclement weather at all. Everyone will be able to go inside of the building. There's more than enough space. The central location off, right there on West Avenue, you know, we were boasting about Parker Road being kind of the centerpiece of the north and the south of the county. But everyone in this county knows where West Avenue is. The parking lot is huge. It will be able to accommodate. But the thing I'm most pleased about is the amount of space on the inside and how they'll be able to process voters in a much more expedient way going through and not having so many people standing out in the elements during the different seasons when voting is taking place. So I'm looking forward to the public relations promo and kickoff. There's a lot more information. For so many years, most recently, most of our residents have been accustomed and used to going to Parker Road. But that has now changed. We're moving over to West Avenue. So more is coming on that particular subject. I encourage you to drop by and see our supervisor over there, and she will be glad to give you a tour of that brand-new facility. It looks good.
All right. So we are down to public comment. I have not received any red cards, but if you want to speak this morning, please make sure you fill this out and turn it in. Do we have anybody here? Ms. Turner? All right. Well, I'll go ahead and read the disclaimer while we see if we have some that sign up. Thank you. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you, Executive Director Rollins. I also want to remind everybody that ninety-nine point nine percent of what we talk about here deals with the unincorporated area of Rockdale County. We do have a mayor and a city council that deals with what happens in Old Town Conyers and the city limits of the city of Conyers. We also have the Rockdale County Public School System, a Board of Education, and a school superintendent who serves as the CEO of the Board of Education. And that person takes care of anything related to schools over at the Board of Education. I'm going to call up Ms. Corliss Turner this morning. She is here with public comment. Come on up, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman and everyone else here. I went to the parade this weekend downtown Conyers, and I don't know if, that's the first time my feet have ever walked through downtown Conyers. I drive through going with my, you know, wherever I'm going, but I have never walked through because it hasn't been attractive to me. And I didn't know, actually, seriously, I didn't know actually what was in downtown those back streets. And I had a vision. And I'm more focused on how can we create more dollars for the county rather than putting a large burden on the property owners with taxes going up. I know the county does need money to, you know, help in various things that's needed around the county. But I would like to know if the, I don't know who owns downtown Conyers because I'm just not finding out. That's city? That's not county? So here's my vision. There's a lot of empty spaces there. And I visualize us upgrading or modernizing downtown and fixing these buildings and bringing in business. I know the lady here by Big Lots has the dance studio upstairs there in the same parking lot that Big Lots in. They're going up to $4,000 a month rent for her, and now she's not going to be able to afford it. And that's when I, that's what I thought about when I saw all these buildings where we could make downtown Conyers, I don't know if the county can do it or it has to be the city, make downtown Conyers more attractive for people to come down in the community, sit out, you know, have some lunch, maybe different. And most of the time downtown, you have those unique shops. So I see that as a business opportunity, as well as when you hear a company come in town, like the Covington Square. Like I said, I never walked through downtown Conyers, but now I just see a vision there. Has that been considered, or is that something that we have to work with, with the city? Because that would bring revenue to the county as well as helping those small businesses. I know there's one that's getting ready to open up. I don't know if it's exactly in downtown, but it's Knockout Barbecue. It's very close. He told me the street, but it's very close to downtown.
So first of all, thank you, Ms. Turner.
You're welcome.
Once again, because I think your questions are so valid that a lot of people are confused about what's the city, what's the county. Downtown Old Town Conyers is certainly within the city limits of Conyers, Georgia, and that falls under the mayor's office and the city council. And they have a city council meeting, very similar to this one, on the first and third Wednesdays of each month. I encourage you to go to their website to get more information about when they actually have their meetings. When you talk about private-owned parcels and private businesses paying rent, they don't pay the rent to the city or to the county. They pay it to a private owner who owns that particular building or space or something like that. However, your idea is spot on about utilizing some of the space in the heart of Old Town Conyers for different amenities and activities to attract more people. That's a great question and petition, should I say, for the mayor and the city council of Conyers. So make sure you visit their website and find out the times and the location of the City of Conyers City Council meeting, where the public is certainly invited to come. As relate to the county government, anything in the unincorporated area of Rockdale County falls under our jurisdiction. Also, we don't own the buildings and parcels. Oftentimes, myself and the Commissioners, as we move through the community, people say, "What are y'all doing with that building over here? What y'all going to do with that building over there?" Well, we don't own those buildings. Those buildings are owned by private companies and retailers and folks like that. When people come into our planning and development or planning and zoning office, we have regulations and guidelines as to what types of businesses can be in certain areas based upon the zoning and the regulation there. But there was one time we had, I think, about a total of five mattress firms here in Rockdale County, all less than a mile. And some of that has changed. Every time I thought about it back then, Lieutenant, I thought about the fact that folks are wearing out mattresses in Rockdale County. We had five mattress firms in one little area, Ms. Jacobs, in a stretch of a mile. That has changed. But we can't say no to those business people based upon a regular business that is wholesome for the community. Now, we do have a say, the county and the city, about anything that is not a good fit or should I say, a negative sin on this community. We can take a stand on those things as a board here, the Board of Commissioners, as well as the city council about things that we don't want to see in our community that would pull our property values down or send a negative message about who we are as a people. But I encourage you to go over to the City of Conyers, anything related to within the city limits. And sometimes you're right. It gets a little confusing to know what's in the city and what's in the county. Absolutely. And I encourage you, as a taxpayer, to make your way over to the Rockdale County Board of Education concerning anything regarding the schools and your school taxes.
Okay. I do understand that. So this area, downtown Conyers, is the city, and that's who I should address it with?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I believe that property, if it is private owned, let's buy it up and let's, you know, bring in some business.
Make your way over to the, make your way over to the city and look at their website and see when the next upcoming meeting. And go over there and share that with the mayor and the council.
I will. And before you say it, I really appreciate everything that you do in Rockdale County.
Thank you. Thank you. And I certainly do appreciate you, Ms. Turner, and all that you do for the citizens of Rockdale County. And that's good. That's good. You, you, I think she's probably the first to give it to me before I gave it to her.
Right. I think that is the first.
You just went down in history. So let the record reflect. Absolutely.
But that was good. That was a good.
It is.
History lesson or civic lesson that, because we really can't do a lot. And we work very well with the city and city officials, but we can't, that's their jurisdiction. That's what they were elected to do, take care of the city, and we take care of the rest. So, but I'm sure that they're open, I'm sure that they're listening right now. I know they are. And I'm sure that they're open to ideas and suggestions. And they also have a downtown development authority that is working to do some of those things that can help move the downtown or Old Town. I like to say Old Town because that's different for Rockdale County. Not everybody has an Old Town. So I like to use that verbiage. So they do have a development authority that can help move in that direction. So maybe to sit in on some of the development authority meetings also would help.
I appreciate that information. They'll listen. You know how to talk.
Yeah, well, yeah. They're listening.
Yeah, thank you. So Director Rollins, aren't there not anymore? If you have a red comment, go ahead and get that to us so we can go ahead and call you up and hear from you this afternoon, this morning, still?
Yeah, we're doing pretty good with time.
Yes, we are.
Had a long agenda, but we seem to get through it.
Come on up, Debbie. Yes, sir.
It was calculated silence.
Okay. Commissioners, we have Deputy Darius Warren.
Yes, I do.
First want to start out by saying thank you, Deputy Warren, for your service to Rockdale County. Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Yeah, how you doing, Mr. Chairman and Madam Commissioners? I'm just here on behalf of a lot of the members of the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office as it relates to the employees of the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. One thing that you said earlier really resonated with me about the community. We are, the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, as you know, we're pretty bad with pay right now. We see a lot of other areas around us growing in pay. We're losing key invaluable employees here at the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office that were great to this community due to pay reasons. They're going other places that are offering a lot more pay. So that's the reason why I'm here, to talk a little bit about that with my time that I have, is that the community that you mentioned, I don't think they would take too kindly to, you know, having a community where they're being policed by one- to two-year service members. You know, that's a big issue that we're running into a lot of the community members here. You know, we have years of service with the upper chain, but the lower guys, due to, you know, losing key people again, we're stuck with having one- to two-year employees. And that's rough on a community where you're serving to protect them, and you're doing everything that you can, but you have a limited amount of experience that are out there on the road. We'll do better by having, not losing those people due to pay reasons or incentives that increase in other counties around us and start showing that, you know, more or less, if we can get the guys that here in Rockdale currently to raise the rate to where we are comparable to some of the other agency. I did study myself to find out that Rockdale County, we are considered a metro Atlanta county, but we're not getting metro Atlanta pay. The problem with that is, is that we are sixty out of sixty-three as it relates to law enforcement, and that's a key part of this community. I too lived in this community. I don't live in this community anymore, but I still am here. And I'm putting in my time. I'm going to be here till the wheels fall off. That's how I say it. But I take pride in the community that I serve. I take pride in this community that I once lived in. And I think it's important for the citizen of Rockdale County to have. And I think it's important for the citizen of Rockdale County to have people to represent them the right way by having the proper people on the street that are on their behalf and not people that have one to two years due to pay.
Absolutely.
Deputy Warren, I want to commend you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first for, and, and, and your, and your colleagues for coming out this morning to attend, uh, the Board of Commissioners meeting. I want to commend you on, number one, again, your service.
Yes, sir, I think.
Your dedication to Rockdale County, uh, certainly your delivery and the level of research. Um, uh, we identify with what you're saying. I take it real personal because I served as a law enforcement officer for fifteen years myself, so I get it. I understand exactly what you're talking about. We are a metro county. I think your message this morning resonates in so many different ways. And I'm gonna yield to my, uh, colleagues here in a second, but I, it, it resonates with us as well in so many ways that, uh, this morning in a leadership Rockdale class, uh, at seven thirty, I said to that class, uh, Rockdale County is still amongst the top safest counties in the state of Georgia. And you can watch the local news this afternoon at five and six o'clock and, uh, you'll see what's happening in the metro area. Every now and then we have a little something, something in Rockdale County because why? We have people that live here. But we're not that county that's constantly on the news with crime and problems because the sheriff and the sheriff's office does a fantastic job, uh, along with the city police department here in the city of Conyers, making sure that we're safe. We hear you loud and very clearly concerning pay and compensation and incentives. And we're moving in a direction to make sure that, uh, not only the sheriff's office, the fire department, all of our one thousand employees, that we put, uh, you all at the forefront in terms of the dedication and service to this county. But it's important that the citizens hear what you just said.
Absolutely.
Because, um, as Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams have talked about, when we come to the time of the year where we have to make a decision as relate to, uh, the tax digest and whether or not we're gonna do a rollback or not, we can't afford, we talk about employee retention, we can't afford to continue to lose valuable qualified employees to other agencies and other departments simply because we can't keep up with the competitive pay. Uh, a- a- and, and I get it. Uh, he talked about the difference in the high echelon of the sheriff's office versus those folks who are out there actually going to the calls and dealing with the people and dealing with the issues and for those deputies who are working those shifts over in the jail. Those are the people who, where the rubber meets the road, who have their hand to the plow. Uh, we support public safety. Uh, what you said this morning, uh, was not, certainly not in vain and it does not fall on deaf ears. Uh, we're making every effort we can to go forward, uh, in this county. And I think it's important that the citizens of Rockdale County understand that in order for us not to be one of those counties and cities that's on the local news night after night after night, we've got to pay for police protection. We've got to pay for law enforcement. We've got to pay for public safety. That includes the fire department, sheriff's office, E nine one one, and everybody who's putting their life on the line day in and day out. We understand it. We get it. Commissioner Washington, I'm gonna yield to you because you've also talked about this, uh, a few times. And then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Williams as well because this whole thing about keeping Rockdale safe, uh, is really important to her, to us. And I can't, uh, thank, uh, the deputy and his colleagues enough for coming out this morning. Commissioner Washington.
Yes, so we hear you. It's embarrassing to me, um, to be number sixty out of sixty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
When it, when we pay the way we pay our employees. It is embarrassing to me to be, to pay not just the, the sheriff's deputies, but everybody. We should be competitive and pay for everybody. But guess what? We also have, we listened to people who were begging us to take a rollback rate. We had talent management. We po- we were poised to do a significant pay increase for the entire county. Um, so that everybody, so that we can get you all from six, out of the sixty, the bottom tier of pay.
Yes, ma'am.
We were purp- we were poised to do that. We had it ready. We had it, um, key, keyed up, but we took a rollback rate. And so that doesn't just affect this year's taxes. That affects our next year's budget also. So we took a hard stance so that we can weigh out this, um, this, this virus, figure out what's going on, and then hopefully next year we'll be able to, to reevaluate. But this is what happened. Somebody texted me, um, while we were getting ready to take the, the, um, do our vote for the millage rate, asking me, what could you all possibly need to increase our taxes for this? This right here? Because all of us, the entire county should be embarrassed that we're number sixty out of sixty-three. The entire county should be embarrassed that we're losing good people, educated people, people who are coming in daily to, um, work their off for this county and we can't pay them well. That's our number one, um, that's our number one expenditure, personnel. And we have to treat our people right in order to get them. We should be embarrassed that we have the sheriff's deputies coming to us telling us that they don't want to be in the bottom tier of pay in the metro Atlanta area. We should be embarrassed. We've got to fix this. And guess what? There's no other way to fix it. If you look at our budget, our budget has been online since we, we posted it. There is no wiggle room in this budget. We've cut everything that we can. The, when, huh, when we talk about things increasing, things don't increase at your house and not increase for the county. It, the same amount of money that it takes to build anything i- i- in the street, it costs probably more for the county. We have increased expenditures. Before, when we got, when I got here in two thousand seventeen, our technology department had been neglected for years. We couldn't have, um, the, the clerk of court called me and said that she couldn't conduct jury selection or jury with, uh, assembly because the jury pool kept falling off a line because of the weather, because it was blowing, like, that's ridiculous. So we have to put all of this money into technology services just so that we can function as a county. But guess what? Those expenditures are going up every year because the, the contracts escalate. The amount of money it takes to do any of this. I've said it before, when gas prices go up, that doesn't just affect you all, it affects us. Because we don't just, I don't, it's just not, I got two cars. It doesn't just affect my two cars. It affects the entire fleet. We have to pay for that. We have to pay for all of that. So when it comes to next year, when people are asking us why we can't take a rollback rate, why we have to have an increase in taxes, it's because of this. It's because you all should be.
Hold, hold, hold on, Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner, you're out of order. Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner, I just need your respect for a moment. As the president of the office, I want to ask that you yield, okay? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Like, uh, and, and let me address that. Like I've said, we looked at this budget. We, I, I have been over this budget at least five, five or six times, line by line, looking at this budget, trying to figure out a way to bring in, to, to not do things. We were at the point where we were about to have to cut some positions. We figured that out. But we don't have any extra money this year. And that's why, because we elected to hold tight this year. So, sir, thank you for coming and thank you for do- and, and so your research is in line with our research and we know it's needed.
Yes, ma'am. Now, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Ms. Turner, now, I'm not gonna be the nice chairman you had all year long and just keep you speaking out of turn. Respectfully, I want you to yield to the deputy. I want you to yield to the commissioner, or I'm gonna ask the lieutenant to escort you out the building. Please respect this meeting. Commissioner Williams, go right ahead.
So I too would like to thank you for coming this morning. And it, um, I have seen the reports of, um, especially our jail detention officers are very low, um, as well as our street officers when you look at the entire metro Atlanta region.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so one of the things I think that some counties do is they have a dedicated piece of the millage rate that is for public safety. And that might be something we want to look at. Um, see how that works in other counties that, um, so, because then the citizens are aware that that is exactly what that amount of the millage rate is going for.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and there's no, no doubt in anybody's mind that, you know, it's, I don't know, point two mil or something for, in some places. I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Yes, ma'am.
But it is dedicated for that so that the ci- and the citizens are okay with that because they know that. And I think that's something we should look at this next year.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Deputy, again. You've heard from this board in response to your petition this morning. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure, I, I really believe, when I think about, we have ninety-three thousand plus residents in Rockdale County. Um, several of the residents boast about the fact that they live in a safe community. And I have no doubt that the citizens would be, uh, very positioned to make certain that all of public safety receives the increase that it needs. But not just limited, as the commissioner stated, not just limited to public safety. We're a small county. We're the second smallest county. So when we begin to, um, uh, take care of employees, we're not looking at one particular entity or division or department. We're looking at all of our departments all across the county and making sure that there's fair and equitable pay across the county. Uh, we're losing, uh, another, uh, member of our planning and development department who has been a major force when in terms of, um, planning and zoning and economic development for this community. We're losing him to another county, uh, and, and, and we looked at the numbers over the last couple of weeks. We just couldn't get there based upon where we are. I'm hearing the co- two commissioners and I've heard from them over the last couple of months. Uh, it appears that this time next year, as we make a decision about the millage rate, things will be different and we're certainly going to, uh, remember these conversations as we move in a new direction because we have to. We really don't have no choice. Commissioner Washington, uh, alluded to the fact that we almost, we were about to let a few people go. Uh, the truth be known, and we were able to, uh, manipulate some things and do something different. We hear you loud and very clear. But let me end on this piece. It's important that the citizens of Rockdale County hear. Because every time it's tax time in terms of the tax digest, that's what the commissioner was talking about. These, this gallery gets packed with, with, uh, citizens who are saying, we don't want you to increase the taxes or increase the millage rate. Well, you can't have it both ways. We have to have tools and resources and qualified personnel in public safety in all of our departments and divisions to run and operate county government. So, uh, a lot of the message, we hear you. We need the citizens of the county to hear. And I believe that with all the people watching this broadcast and all the folks who are going to watch this particular broadcast, there's gonna be a lot of talk. There's gonna be probably a newspaper article or two about this. Uh, but let the record reflect that the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners are in full support of public safety in Rockdale County. Uh, we need the citizens to come to an agreement and an understanding that if they need, uh, if they want continuous delivery of quality service, police protection and law enforcement, and bragging rights to say that they live in a safe community, we gotta put our money where our mouth is and we gotta pay the personnel that get out day in and day out to get the job done. You, you done good, get the message to the Board of Commissioners. Get the message to the citizens of Rockdale County. Make sure they understand that's why there's a possible need for a, uh, millage increase so we can pay our people and stop competing. As the economy continues to get better and we get over into twenty twenty-two, after the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, the projec- projections are already showing statewide, local and on a national level that the economy is going to get much, much better. That means people are going to go where they are being paid.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
And not just sheriff's deputies, but every, every employee. People are gonna go where they can put more groceries on their table. And if Rockdale is not paying them, we're gonna lose people. We've got to stop the hemorrhaging. We've got to stop it and plug it up. And that's what we intend to do. Thank you so much. Uh, you, um, you, you've gone down in history today.
Second in the program?
Yes, indeed. And we certainly do appreciate it. But I encourage you all to talk to your citizens when you go to the HOA meetings and you go out and, and throughout the county and explain and educate them the cost of public safety.
Yes, sir. And I thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and Madam, uh, Commissioners. I thank you.
Thank you and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, oh, well, I'll wait.
We're almost, we're almost there.
I'll wait my turn.
Are there any other public comments? I don't want to overlook anybody. I think the deputy did a fantastic job on behalf of his colleagues. Let's give him a round of applause. Certainly do appreciate all of them and their service. And I appreciate the efforts of Sheriff Levitt and what he's trying to do to lead, uh, the sheriff's office in, in, in an upward direction. We appreciate it and we support it. Uh, Director Ruggles, I think we're gonna move right on deeper into board comment. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm gonna yield to Commissioner Washington. You, you, the clock is in, is in your hand.
I get three minutes also? Wow. I promise, I probably could do this unless it's not. Don't, don't. Um.
Put the clock up, Sean.
Sean, this is your friend, Commissioner Washington.
The clock is up.
Anyway, um, once again, thank you, um, Deputy Warren. Um, we needed that. I need, I needed to say that. Uh, that if you couldn't tell, that's been inside of me for a minute. So, um, I appreciate you coming out so that we can have a discussion because a lot of times people think that we, we're sitting up here in a vacuum and we don't know and we don't, uh, worse, we don't care. And I think that this board has shown above and beyond that we care about the, our, our, um, our employees. We definitely value safety. I think one of the things about running countywide is you get to go to all these different subdivisions. And one of the things I loved about Rockdale County is, um, I don't want to say, could everybody watch these tele- but you, you, it's a very safe community and there are different ways that people show that this community is safe by some of the things that they do outside or i- in their commu- in their subdivisions. Um, and, and, and I love that. I love it. And, and that's because we do have quality sheriff's deputies. Um, our fire department is A-one, um, and, and I appreciate you all. I, I really do. And, but the way you show appreciation, now you gotta put your money where your mouth is. So we're working on it. I hear you. We hear you. And we're working on it, but, but it takes resources to do that. And we were, um, like I said, poised to do something different, but we, we decided to put the reins on it so that we can make sure that this county is set up, um, uh, through this pandemic. So we will be working on those. We hear you. We definitely hear you. Um, my next thing is didn't, we, I don't know if y'all were busy this weekend, but this was a busy weekend. We had the parade where luckily we, um, got out of it with no incidents. But, um, uh, Commissioner Williams was the queen of, of the parade. We had our vaccination event where, um, we, um, vaccinated almost two hundred, almost three hundred people. So that was huge in Rockdale County. Very excited about that. Um, we had the tree lighting with Santa Claus and all the children and hot chocolate. And I can't tell y'all where I went to, um, to, but I was being festive. Um, but we, that was a great time. And then we had, um, the parade of homes was also this weekend. So we had a great, great weekend with a lot of things going on. But there, um, I'm not gonna mention the football game that happened this weekend.
You just did.
That everybody's in mourning.
Right, exactly. But, um, we did, um, but, you know, it's, yeah, um, but it wasn't very. Oh, that's Mac over there. You might want to be quiet just 'cause you gotta get home. You might wanna be quiet just 'cause you gotta get home. Anyway, but we do have great sheriff's deputies that would get you, give you a ri- uh escort out of the county if needed. Um also, um I would like to congratulate our school board for being awarded um a a school board of excellence. Um they had their school board, um I don't know what it was, a meeting, um and and they were uh awarded the school board of excellence award, so congratulations to our school board. Um and also finally, I'd like to, once again, thank talent management for all of the new um policies that you have been working so hard on that we finally get to bring to fruition um in this at at well, after next week, so thank you again. That's all I have, that would've been three minutes too.
Commissioner Williams.
So um you spoke about the parade and being safe, but do you know in the back of my mind, and this relates to our deputies and this and the city police, in the back of my mind, I I had I was aware and conscious of the parade held in Wiscon- uh yeah, Wisconsin just a co- a few weeks ago. Where somebody decided to drive their SUV right into the participants. Um so I I you know, because I thought, what happened in this little town we've never heard of? It's not like it was a big city.
Mm-hmm.
Things happen and so we count on our law enforcement to protect us. And um as we were going through that parade route, you know, I saw city police everywhere and the same thing um at the tree lighting, the deputies were out and they were visible and they were everywhere. And you know, I think we we cannot think that just because this is Rockdale, well, we know things happen. We had a shooting at our high school twenty years ago when my son was there and um so it does happen and we just ha- we all have to be circumspect, ooh, that's that vocabulary word, about um about what's going on around us and and watching. Um in another interesting experience I had this week we- weekend was I met a couple of new people who have put a an offer on a home in Rockdale County. The reason they chose chose Rockdale was because of our low tax rate.
Hmm.
And so, you know, people forget that, you know, that we are still lower than most of the metro areas. You look at the millage rate and you've and people forget that you only pay thirty percent of that millage rate, which I calculated out one day, is just a little over five mil. And so we're very competitive with other communities and so, you know, we I don't have any problem looking at what we need to do at this next um millage rate hearing.
I'm sorry.
Um you know, 'cause I I thought a lot about it.
Yeah.
Um I too appreciate the remote work policy, it's something we've uh looked at for and talked about for a while. Um I I really appreciate that and and all of the work that each of our directors do in their departments. We have some really top-notch directors and I appreciate the work that goes on um in their departments and their communication. I think the communication with um the commissioners has been excellent and and I appreciate that. Um I one last thing is that um in January, there will be a what's called a point in time count.
Hmm.
And that is sponsored by HUD and it is a a one-day count of all the homeless people in your community. They can be sheltered or they can be unsheltered, but it's it is January twenty-second this year from nine P M. to two A M. and they are looking for volunteers to um assist with that count. And they're they're volun- volun- they need more volunteers than just those that are out from nine P M. to two A M. They need other people behind the scenes.
What day of the week is that on?
Uh Saturday, it's a Saturday.
Okay.
Um so the sign-up email to indicate your uh interest in volunteering is this. And um this this count then allows nonprofits to know what the what their what the homeless uh population actually is and it's very indicative of the grants that they're able to receive. So um you know, just like the census, there's funding attached to this count also. Those are my comments.
All right.
Can I make?
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Um I would like to, I forgot to thank all of the people that gave luggage to the luggage drive. We had over a hundred um pieces of luggage donated for.
Oh, did you?
To D-Fax. They wanted um they only needed about four, we got more than they needed, um so I'm very excited. Um thank you to the um Per- Philadelphia Church um for their very generous donation, um the men of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, the men of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated um for assisting with the luggage drive, so we had a great turnout. Also, I wanted to remind people, um any small business owners, that I do do the Small Business Mixer on the second Tuesday of the month from six P M. until at the reserve and please come through this next Tuesday, not tonight, but next week. That's it.
Congratulations on a great luggage event too.
I'm excited.
Very good call for the young people, that's a part of the uh D-Fax transition program. Uh very briefly, I do have a few announcements. Um I want to first start off by acknowledging commissioners that we have lost another icon and pillar of our community in that of Ms. Aileen Hamm. She was ninety-four years old. Um the Hamm family has been a part of Rockdale County uh for well over a hundred years. Uh Ms. Hamm lived on the south side of the county and several of our folks from the fire department and sheriff's office are very familiar with her. Um her children have served in law enforcement throughout metro Atlanta area. Ms. Hamm is ninety-four years old, uh very outspoken and a champion for the people's agenda uh here in Rockdale County. She was a lifelong resident and member of the Old Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. Uh the celebration of life service will take place on Saturday at eleven A M. over at the Old Pleasant Hill Baptist Church on Honey Creek Road. Um but we are praying for comfort and peace for the Hamm family here in Rockdale County. Uh she was, of course, mother, grandmother, and great-great-great-grandmother as well, so uh we are praying for that family as Ms. Hamm has certainly made a very positive mark in Rockdale County down through the years, so I wanted to start off by um make mention of that. Also want to talk a a little bit about the conversation that Mayor Evans and I from the City of Conyers are are engaging in as we continue to move forward. Uh we are putting together a campaign really called the War on Litter. Uh you may have noticed throughout this pandemic, there's been an increased amount of litter and I don't know what happened because our code enforcement and our community improvement team that we implemented back in twenty uh seventeen and twenty eighteen has done a tremendous job, but the moment they go to one little cut and hole and begin to clean that up, the next day someone has dumped tires, mattresses, furniture, debris, bags of trash. I I'm really asking the citizens of Rockdale County and the City of Conyers, all of those who are watching this broadcast, to help us. Uh we have what is called See Something, Say Something. The number to the See Something, Say Something, for those who are writing this number down is seven-seven-zero-two-seven-eight-seven-eight-eight-eight. Again, that number is seven-seven-zero-two-seven-eight-seven-eight-eight-eight. Now, there is both a city and a county ordinance that speaks to littering. There is. You can be you can you can receive a citation for littering if you're found littering. Uh use technology. Folks use it for everything else. You may as well use it when you see somebody illegally dumping or putting some trash somewhere. Uh I I can't for the life of me understand why people are have the the increase of folks throwing trash. Uh and now it's getting, it used to be just on the side roads or the back roads or the cul-de-sacs, but now it's out in the open. We're seeing pieces of furniture, pieces of vehicles and car tires and all kinds of appliances and household items just everywhere and trash. I also wanna say to folks living in our apartment community, uh we I recognize that a lot of folks have good intentions. What am I talking about? I'm glad you asked. They intend to take that bag of trash that they put on the hood of their car and put it in the Dempsey Dumpster before they exit on the way to work and school, but they forget it falls off the car in the street, trash is everywhere. It looks awful. The mayor and I are launching a campaign, War on Litter. I'm gonna figure out a very incentivized way to reward people who dial the number. I want some folks to get paid for telling me who, when, what, where, and how. I want the citizens to get involved with this, Commissioner Washington, to s- to report to us. Uh these people, we need to reward folks for letting us know who's out there trashing up our community. So I I I I we wanna find those people, let me make sure I say that, Chief Cave, we wanna make sure we find those people and write citations uh to those individuals who are being negligent and trashing up our community. But I really need to get the citizens involved in reporting this stuff, reporting this. Uh we gonna start sifting uh like they do in Richmond County, they gonna sift through your trash when we find it over on Sigmund Road and we gonna find your 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 phone bill, your light bill, your water bill, or whatever other bill with your name on it, then we gonna send the police to knock on your door and we gonna write you a fine if we can track and trace it all the way to you. That's what they do down in Richmond County, they got a code enforcement team that doesn't do anything but concentrate on finding out who's dumping what where. A war on litter. There's been an increase of littering in this community and you're gonna be hearing me talk more and more and more about it as we move forward. I'm so delighted that the mayor is joining forces with the county and we're gonna be teaming up in this effort to get it done. Also, uh I wanna invite everybody tonight to come out to our um holiday drop-in. It will be from five-thirty to seven-thirty over at the J. P. Carr Community Room, uh right there, uh nine-eighty-one Taylor Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. Uh the board of commissioners and all of our community friends and partners, we're encouraging you to come out. It is a drop-in and so it was uh somebody told me to make sure I put emphasis on the word drop-in. Come in, we got some good uh refreshments, but we like you to slide in and slide out. It's a drop-in, so I thought I'd say that it's only from five-thirty to seven-thirty. If you coming home, if you bringing a piece of Luminolfo or or a Ziploc bag and trying to take food home to the family, it's not the place to come to. Just get you a little bit, wet your whistle and keep it moving and say Merry Christmas and all of those things as we wrap up by year. I just I have to be I have to be plain and very clear, declare very clear because uh think about uh Commissioner Washington's cousins and when they hear that there's gonna be food, they come and they camp out.
Commissioner Washington.
I I'm sorry, no, I I don't know, I'm wider that anyway. I just thought I just uh anyway, join us tonight, five-thirty to seven-thirty at J. P. Carr for the holiday drop-in. Um Director Rutledge, is there any need for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of discussing land acquisition.
My lord. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
I move that we move into executive session and we adjourn at the executive session.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to now transition.
Mr. Chairman, could since Commissioner Williams has stepped out, could you uh second her motion?
Yes, I want to second the motion to move into executive session. Uh and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out this morning. We will now take our meeting into the executive session. And for those of you uh that will not be back in this particular audience next week, we want to say Merry Christmas, be safe. This is the time of the year, you need to be vigilant about your surroundings and your comings and goings. Please be safe, shop local, spend money here in Rockdale County as you buy gifts. Why? Because you help the tax base. You help us to pay for the police and the fire. You support what we're doing on the local government by by spending your tax dollars here locally, so shop local, be safe, and we're moving into executive session. Thank you so much.
Can we have reset?[1788.69]